Ready? Good evening, quite the call. Tonight's regular meeting in Jefferson Township for our trustees. It's Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, at 7:00 PM. We all rise for 2:00.
Protestants to defy the United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation of God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time we have alone the silence on military firefighters, fire workers, sheriff's deputies, as they serve our community here abroad. Thank you. Roll call, please, Tracy.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Herr.
Trustee McLoughlin.
President.
Here we are, here in the corner, President Army. Fiscal officers' reports, the subjects you had before.
As I discussed in the work session, there's been, I've said this several times, I'll say it again, I put checks in the box. I appreciate that you guys come in at least once, that's why I always assign checks. There's one, a particular insurance check that you got about two weeks ago to get out. It's sitting there waiting to get, but we're done and called. And then I want to go and have a payment, and I told him that I should give a second signature tonight. So we already had one, Trustee McGuire, Mr. McGuire, Trustee McGuire, and assigned. Then he wanted you guys, McGuire, or Mann, to sign.
Tracy, did we get, in our last meeting, we had communication in regards to where the money was supposed to come from, was that, did you get with Wright and Wolf to have, did they clear it up?
Well, so after the meeting on the 20th, Mr. Wolf was gone from Thursday, I think it took two days, and I couldn't find Chief Wright, so I had to go ahead and just figure out where to get the money from, and you have a resolution by transfer some money to pay that bid.
Okay. Yeah, guys, it will be paid us every year. We need to make a better effort to pay it on time.
Every year is the anniversary day of July 10th.
You know that, right, yeah, I know what property tax would do on certain date, I know I gotta make this payment on this date, we know we're gonna make this payment every year, we need to get a better plan on time.
Other than, I have no financial report, computer didn't have access all weekend and Monday, and I didn't have any time to finish up the financial report, so I don't have any paper for you, but I will have a detailed report later on this week, once I'm able to get back in the computer and do the bank reconciliation, I'll give you guys detailed reports. But there's no paper financial report for today. Any questions?
So I guess we don't need to make a motion since we don't have a report?
Pay the bills.
We'll make a motion to pay bills and assign warrants, appropriations.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Roll call, the subjects.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Mann.
Yeah.
Trustee McLoughlin.
Yes.
Okay, whole business, trustees dealing with business to bring forward to the floor.
Where do we stand on, we had a resident ask us about yoga classes, and we found some chairs, we still missed a few, those chairs were given by a hospital, believed to outreach, not to the township, but where do we stand? Do we ever get answer from Lori, do we know where we stand? I see an email, I saw an email train, I didn't, where do we stand on that?
They met with Lori and they had it, they had it set up.
They had it set up?
Yep. Now, I want to correct the record for the tables or the chairs, I contacted Premier Health, the donation remained to Jefferson Township, not to outreach, but outreach used it, but it was given to Jefferson Township by the records at the hospital. And at least what they know, they could not give property to a nonprofit or a public, they had to give it to a public entity, and that's how the fire department got them. So they were property to township, but they're stamped, and they're having a tough time finding it.
So once we find it, we'll let them use it, or what's?
Well, yeah, I hope so, but they looked everywhere.
But while we're talking about yoga, Vicki submitted a question to the trustees for when the buildings, when they're scheduled to come back in for this, is that being clarified?
Lori decided, the agriculture society books the buildings, they decide when you come, so that's not a township's decision.
Any other old business, trustees? Seeing as there is none new business, first on the agenda is opening of the engine tanker proposals, set dates to meet with the vendors.
Yes, so trustees, you had asked for an RFP, an equestro proposal to send out, and the deadline was July 30th at 11:00 AM. Two offers or proposals were received, they were sealed, they have not been opened. The one was received and signed for by the fiscal officer on the 26th of July, 2021. It was made out to Stephen Wolf, but it did not come to Stephen Wolf, it was in Mr. Mann's mailbox.
Can I correct that, please? I found it outside of our door, I didn't sign for that.
But you put on the box that ate the time.
I put today, but I did not sign it.
Right, but it said Stephen.
It was sitting outside of our door.
Right, but you didn't get it to me after you got it.
Well, I couldn't put it under your door, you were again.
I'm making it for the record, the assistant prosecutor.
You were not in the office during business hours.
The assistant prosecutors had put it on the record.
And you weren't in the office during business hours, so get that on the record.
Now, the certified, the certified letter of paperwork had three lines for like, almost like a heart monitor, no signature, but this, the RFP strictly said it goes to Stephen Wolf, and that's how the package was addressed, and it did not reach you. So when I sent you through the gentleman and legal counsel, the fact that we only had one bid, that's the one that was delivered, and you could retract that email because it's not true, we had it in our bill, this should have come to me, when you have a legal bid process going. I want to make sure that any future RFPs, this does not happen. It should have been delivered to me in an email or something that says, hey, I got a package.
You are arguing in order.
I can't, there's email.
Did you want me to leave it outside the door?
Uh, no, but if it was a press email, are you taking the rest of my mail, that's a press email?
I don't have anything.
Tracy, you get all the mail.
I don't, no, I don't, that's not my responsibility. Is everybody elected to do the mail? Is it for my duty to do the mail? No, it is not. That is you guys' responsibility as trustees, to make sure somebody gets the mail.
Not true.
That is true.
Okay.
You are, you do not, it is not just me.
Order.
You order slamming that thing.
So trustees, you are not in any trouble because of what we've been able to accomplish. Mr. Peterson says they're good to open, there are two bids that were received, and at the time when we have contacted the postal general, they are investigating the entire process, and we'll, I'll recontact you once the postal company does on the investigation. But for now, you have two bids, they're legally allowed to be opened, would you like to open?
Do we have a rep from, what do we have, reps from the fire vendor, we have everybody here?
Okay, so I'm gonna open them in order.
Who do we have here?
Heritage Fire Equipment, something like brands.
Okay.
And Rose and Bar, All American Fire.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're with something which had to do with this bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any objection to this mail issue, opening these bids?
Well, he, I think, Mr. Wolf, you said you checked with legal counsel, and they said they were good, that he had delivered, so they're more educated now than myself. I just hand-delivered mine, is, I wanted to make sure he got it, but.
Well, trustees, do you feel comfortable proceeding with everything that's in our possession for this meeting?
Yes.
Um, may I just say aye?
Aye.
All right, open them all.
Okay, first box is from Heritage Fire Equipment, 2162 Cloverleaf Street, something, but, Columbus, Ohio, 43232, and it says, received 7/26/2021, TME, which I would assume is Tracy Edwards. Came by, came by, sort of by mail.
I didn't, I didn't post it.
You know it's open now.
It's sealed, the RFP, and it is sealed, it says, Sutton Corporation, P.O., Box 158, Amelin, Ohio, 432015. Part of the fireman trustees is to have three copies of their proposal, so eventually what we can do is each of you take a copy with you, but we have to at least get a copy to have as the original, so we'll work that out. Okay, says, to Jefferson Township, Montgomery County, Iowa, 580, county number ID, Ohio, date, July 21st, 2021, we hereby propose and agree to furnish the public firefight equipment upon acceptance of this proposal. One Sutton Petty Duty Custom Cab Pumper Tanker completed and delivered for the total sum of $653,422.86 due upon delivery, with 100% prepay, and then it says, $644,710.58 due within 30 days of contract signing. The unit shall be manufactured completely, completely, completed, it says completely, in accordance to the following proposal and delivered in approximately 548 days from the date of the contract signing, or purchase order, subject to delays for all causes beyond our control. This proposal shall be valid for, now this says 30, but it's 45 in the bracket.
It is 45 minutes.
Okay, I'll need an adjustment to that, but it says 30, and then in parentheses. If the contract or purchase order is not received within the proposed duration, we reserve the right to extend, withdraw, or modify our proposal, including pricing, delivery times, and prepayment discounts as applicable. Respectfully, Frederick Hagman, Heritage Fire Equipment, and it's signed by him, and Heritage Fire Equipment Sales Service Parts Equipment, and now it follows, it says Sutton Corporation, 6450 Iron Road, Dublin, Ohio, and their phone number. So for the record, it's $653,422.86 upon delivery, or with 100% prepay, it's $644,710.58, which would be due within 30 days of the contract signing. That is the Heritage Sutton, do you like me to open the next one? Got one that's labeled original bid, and two binders that say copy of the bid. Says technology innovation leadership, down in the right-hand corner, it says Rosenbauer. So I'll open the original. Okay. This is a purchase order for this vehicle, and the price on it is $629,837. One Rosenbauer pumper, complete with Rosenbauer Commander chassis per attached specifications. It was notarized on February 13th. It does have some specifications about changes, changes will be priced at standard pricing, and specials will be priced through our normal process. Significant changes made to the vehicle during this time period may result in a delivery extension, 0 to 60 days if we change chassis. The aerial part doesn't exist, but Rosenbauer body, 0 to 60. And there's other requirements as well. Okay, the $629,837 price is, was based on 100% prepayment at contract signing. And they included some financing available to trustees for you to look at, so at this point, that's what your two bids are. I would suggest that you generally schedule a meeting with each one of them, so they can show you specifically what their bid stipulates, and then make a decision following that, but that's up to you guys and what you want to do. What is the delivery? The question, Rosenbauer, do you have a comment on what page that might be on?
Yeah, it should be on the proposal page with the price. Right around the top.
Delivery in calendar days, 455 days upon order. And that's right here on the, on the, on the purchase order.
Do both the vendors present have demo units available for showing how your brands, belts, and whistles are a part of this?
Yeah, we have many in the area, as long as you guys have one as well in your station.
Yes, the factory facility is about 45 minutes away from this location, we'll be sure you have the truck you want to see.
Trustees, any questions for the vendors while they're present here? Okay, we want to set up dates for the next meeting, but then. I don't know if this is a meeting with all the trustees, or if this is just fire staff and the people in the committee that's involved in buying that.
No, if you have a work session, you trustees now are at the lender buying it. It's your decision, and not the committee's. I would include the fire chief in your work session with each of the vendors as well. Because as you guys know, the specification sheet is some 99 pages long, so there's a lot of detail, and when you're spending a half million dollars or more, you have to be very specific about what you trustees decide to buy. To you, the worth of these vendors and supply, and get all your answers to your questions before I would ever suggest.
Trustees, given the size of the bill of specs, I would recommend we set a date around 30 days out, so that would be a work session sometime in September.
You gotta be aware that you only have 45 days on one bid, and 30 on the other.
So we want to move it up to the next work session?
Well, I would think it's gonna take longer than it all, if you have to evaluate each of these, it needs to be on a separate day.
For Heritage, we need to make a meeting to go to Dublin Travel, and then Rosenbauer decide where we're gonna meet with you guys, to, I was gonna do a visual and a lookie at the same time.
We can arrange for, for the Navy counter or facility of Dublin.
I'm sorry.
We can arrange for you guys to come to our city.
I'll make that far away, I'll do a plan.
To be fair and equal, are you available at your Washington courthouse location?
Yeah, we can, we can either meet there, or we can go to a location, we have, like Corey said, we have trucks all throughout the area, so if you'd like to meet at a station where we have a truck in service.
That's fine.
We can do that, too.
Whatever you guys work out.
What do you, what do you think is best, guys? I mean, what?
Well, there's a truck in service, not 30 minutes from here, that's similar to what you guys are looking at. So if you wanna go that route, I can arrange that, be more than welcome, and we could hit a couple trucks coming and going, but this truck here is particularly close to where you're looking. It's with that about 30 minutes.
Okay, so why don't we do two Fridays in a row, I can't do both the same day, I don't have time of the day, but one on the 13th, and one on the 20th, late Friday afternoon. We, we, we won't have, as I said, we have 30 days and 45 days, whatever the time was.
I could do the 20th.
The township gave us these funds several years ago, we need to move.
I have previous commitments on the 13th, but I could do the 20th.
Okay, so, the two other trustees available, those Friday afternoons, you guys have worked it, I mean.
I can make the 20th, I can make the days.
Okay.
I'm good for those.
Okay, so Rosenbauer is saying they're not good on the 13th, okay, Heritage, what about, could we set stuff with you on the 13th, that afternoon?
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, guys, how much time do you think we ought to allow, allow, I'm sorry, allow for a, you know, you're giving us a presentation, and do that, and have questions, how much time do you think we should suffice for that?
With a presentation and reviewing the specs that we've submitted, it's gonna take several hours.
I, I, I was gonna start it too, yeah.
No less than that, probably.
Meet at the, so you can send us the location?
Yes.
You will email us a location?
Sure.
And you can give us, you know, DC Street address, I presume that's in there?
Yes.
2 o'clock, both of you?
Yes.
Guys, 2 o'clock Friday afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Sounds great, I'm looking forward to it, both of you. We need to get this done. You guys good with that, Tim?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes the business on the fire trucks, trustees, any other new business?
We had discussions on that All American Rescue Plan, I want to make a motion, we need to talk about what we're gonna do with that, we want to make a motion to proceed and get that money, take that money that's been given out, and then we passed a resolution to already have somebody manage that money for us, which, you know, we know on, I think we can do that ourselves, we don't need to give that, that's giving money away, but, so government's giving away money, we need to do the paperwork, proceed, just have a vote here, yea or nay, we want to proceed on and accepting the money that's been given to us on the fence, and American Rescue Plan. President?
Is there a resolution for that?
No, it's, we just need a motion.
To accept, you, what, what are we accept?
You have to apply for the money, so that, before you can manage it, then you gotta apply for it. So you need to put an application to it, so, or you need to get approval from your guys to put an application.
So that's something the grant writer, I'd like to have more information on before I vote.
Okay, you have until September 4th.
So we gotta email, or who's?
It's just the, I know at the last meeting, you guys passed a resolution for grant writers to manage the money for the, for the American Rescue Plan Act, but you can't manage the money you don't have, you haven't applied for the money yet, you have to do an application.
So the grant writer's gonna submit the application on her behalf, correct?
That's what you're hired to do.
Okay.
And why are we spending, why, why are we paying somebody to do something we didn't we can do ourselves? I don't understand.
The big reason is so it's done right.
Something I ought to do, and the government's already said they will help us do it. Other townships are doing it themselves.
This is Jefferson Township.
Yeah, Jefferson Township.
Now, we just got done, we came in, I'm getting the mail received, so.
Well, one thing we're gonna have problems is if you guys don't know when that grant writer applies for that, on the grant, they need to do it before September 4th. Because if you don't accept it, then you won't have another chance. That's, that's what I have to say. So Steve, can you give us a status on where the money is? Is there an application for the money? Do you know?
You made a statement to the trustees at the last meeting that you weren't giving up any of the paperwork that you had for both programs. The trustees are waiting on that paperwork.
And I also understand from communication I've had with other parties that, so we're gonna give a percentage of a hunk of change. And we're talking about thousands of dollars to manage this, for a grant writer to manage this money, we're giving, the government's giving us free. We're gonna pay somebody else thousands of dollars to manage that money when other townships are doing it themselves, number one. Number two, that money that we're spending to do that cannot come out of that. So we'll give you a couple hundred thousand dollars. You can't use that money to pay for the grant writer to take that. So that's gonna come out of the general fund or our taxpayers' dollars have got to be used to manage this money. We do it ourselves, we need to do it ourselves.
Mr. Reddick, you're debating your residents.
I know, that's true.
Okay, so, but there's nothing in that resolution that says anything about applying for the money. It just says managing the money that you don't have.
Are you gonna give up the paperwork?
There's nothing for me to give up. You gotta fill out an application. You have to give approval to fill the application. I guess the grant writer is, because I'm not holding anything.
The grant writer does not have anything since you hired him. They have to have months and send to the township.
Nothing's been sent to me.
So you have nothing about ARB?
I have what I went to training for, but you guys are giving to the grant writer. So that's what I have, the training that I took that I know that we have to fill out the application.
They also are waiting on the money from the CARES Act. They're not the money, but they're waiting on all the time.
CARES Act is all, CARES Act is all done.
CARES Act is done, but that was 2020 month.
It's all done except for the mess up at Station 59, which we've had several discussions about.
It's not done.
It's done.
And everything's done but 59.
But the vote that you guys took, hired for both. So you have to be aware, you passed a resolution and hired for both. You cannot debate it.
Okay, and so on the, on the COVID money, what all the bucks do we take care of?
The unspent amounts.
And regards to?
You trustees finding out what you're doing.
Okay, you didn't answer the question. So the answer, the answer to the question.
You asked me, what? And I explained it. The amount of money unspent was dedicated to Station 59 that you have not been.